Welcome to the Durango City Council. And could we begin, please, with a roll call? Councillor Bateen?
Here.
Councillor Bricky?
Here.
Councillor White? Mayor Tom Yousa?
Mayor Marbury?
Here. And tonight, I would like to call forward Barney Hinkle, as well as Dave, the coach from the Fort Lewis College Mountain Bike National Winners. And he will be introducing all of the teams. So please come to the podium. Barney, please come on down. Coaches? If you would please be so kind to introduce all of your staff?
Oh, for sure. Yes, I will. So, thank you all for coming. We're very, very fortunate to live in a place that you can be a collegiate cyclist and win national championships. Our community is amazing. We have a lot of good supporters in town. It's great to have the college behind us. They really treat us well to get all these kids to races and to Nationals this year. They traveled to Missoula, Montana. And if you can see there on the table, that's our trophy from this year. Last year, the trophy is actually bigger. It wouldn't really fit in my car, so I didn't bring that one. But that's a pretty good trophy for us. We're looking forward to Mountain Bike Nationals being at Purgatory next year, Collegiate Mountain Bike Nationals. And we're looking forward to showing off to our hometown. So let me introduce everyone here. Our athletic director, Barney Hinkle.
Thank you.
There he is. Elka Brutzard, our women's coach and strength and conditioning coach. Ian Burnett, our track and road and cyclocross and when I'm not there, mountain bike coach. Zach Graveson, one of our downhill coaches. Chad Cheney, our endurance coach and his daughter Belle, of course. And Drew Mitchell, he's another one of our gravity coaches.
Thank you so much. Would you like to call up the team?
I think we should call up the team.
Absolutely.
What I'll do is, we have a few national or a couple of national champions here tonight. Another one couldn't make it, but I'll call up Cole Patton. He won two national titles for us this year. And then Seville Blanc won the short track national championship. And then, you know, we have these individual winners. And then McCauley Smith is our two-time defending downhill national champion. And then, really, we have these individual champions, but really, it takes a team. It takes everyone working well together, scoring points, beating riders from other teams. And we did it in actually dominant fashion this year. So the rest of the team, I'll just go row by row. Come on up. Lisa Howell McGill. And then a local boy, Shane Ellis. He's a gravity racer for us. Then we have Cooper Weems, who is an endurance racer. Come on up. We'll get all of us up in here. Al Runyon, she's a gravity racer for us. Henry Nadel, endurance racer, also getting ready to try to defend his cyclocross national championship. Then we have our mechanic, Carson Jones Wilkins, who, boy, no mechanics, no mechanicals all week long. That's what the team needs. Another local, Cameron Sippi, who's an endurance racer. And then we have Ben Bennett, a gravity racer. And then Jared Lockwood, another gravity racer. He better scoot to the back for the picture. And then Thomas Gautier, senior. He's an endurance racer in Nash Dory, from Arizona, another one. And then we'll go to the other side of the room. We had Stella Cisneros. She's a freshman this year. Come on up. Kelsey Lundberg, senior, had her last Mountain Bike Nationals. Anna Sheer, she kind of does it all. She's one of our omnium racer, who does both endurance and gravity races. And another local, Ellen Campbell, endurance racer for us. So there's the whole crew. Is, did I miss anyone? All right. Do you think someone wanted Stella? Go sneak and grab that elk horn. Or deer horn.
And we have our...
What am I asking you to grab? I don't know. Cut it there. There you go. Sweet. All right. Take a good picture. So. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, someone asked me, what do I like most about being on city council? And this is one of the things I like the most, to recognize the young people of Durango, whether they're in college and high school, at the elementary school, the bookmarks. And so we really appreciate all of you coming tonight. I know your life is very busy, so you don't have to stay. So if you'd like to exit, thank you. And go do homework. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Barney. Thank you. Thank you. And while they are exiting, I just wanted to remind the audience, if you have not signed up for public participation, if you'd like to talk to city council on something that's not on the agenda, please sign in. And we're going to begin with a review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow the city council, by a single motion, to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item Number 6. And Ms. Phillips, if you will, review.
Item 4.1 through 4.3, our approval of minutes. 4.1, the study session of September 25, 2018. 4.2, the regular meeting of October 2, 2018. And 4.3, the study session from October 9, 2018. Items 4.4 through 4.8 are discussion of possible action items. 4.4 concerns resolution R. 201843, authorizing an increase in benefits for beneficiaries and retirees of the old higher police pension plan and an additional appropriation in the general fund. 4.5 concerns resolution R. 201844, authorizing an increase in benefits for beneficiaries and retirees of the old higher fireman's pension plan and additional appropriation to the general fund. 4.6 concerns resolution R. 201845, adopting the Civility First Durango pledge program established by the city's Community Relations Commission. 4.7 concerns resolution R. 201846, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation for permanent water quality facilities. Items 4.8 and 4.9 are requests for public hearings with a proposed date of Monday, November 19, 2018. 4.8 is to consider an ordinance amending Article 3 of Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Durango regarding the use of motorized vehicles on city trails. And 4.9 is to consider the granting of an easement to La Plata Electric Association, Inc., to install power lines for service to the new city of Durango Parks Office and Shop.
Thank you. Would any council like to remove a consent agenda item?
I'd like to remove 4.7.
And I'm going to remove 4.6. And I'll look for a motion?
I'll make a motion, approve the consent agenda with the exception of items 4.6 and 4.7. Second.
Roll call, please. Councillor Bricky?
Yes.
Councillor Bateen?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
And Mayor Marbury? Yes. 4.6 is discussion and possible action regarding a resolution of the City of Durango adopting a civility pledge program established by the CRC. So at this time, I would like to ask the CRC representatives to come to the podium and to discuss your proposal for our community. And please introduce yourself at the podium.
I'm Claire Atkinson.
I'm Nancy Stauffer.
And I'm Martha Flores.
And I'm the chair of the CRC, the Community Relations Commission. We were established in 2012 by this very council, resolution by this council. We have, through that time, been charged with promoting social harmony and civility amongst, within our community. And with that in mind, we've gone out and interviewed bunches of community members, as well as organizations, asking them questions about what they think about Durango and what they're happy about with Durango, what's challenging about Durango. And from that, we have come up with a Civility First program that we're going to target first the businesses in town. Some of the feedback that we got was that within Durango, it's a fairly open and accepting community, but oftentimes the visitors to are less accepting. So to put forward who we are, who we stand, what we stand for as a community was what the civility, was kind of the motivation for the Civility First pledge, if you will. So part of this, it's a volunteer program for businesses and organizations to assist promoting acceptance and respect among both residents and visitors who work, live, shop, and play in our city. Traits of the Civility First Durango pledge program include respect, compassion, kindness, sincerity, fairness, consideration, responsibility, and acceptance. Of course, that's not all, but those are just some of the ideas that we want to put forward to have people be thinking about. We have the support of the Business Improvement District. We've also spoken with the Durango Chamber of Commerce about during our conceptual stages. In the next few months, pending the approval of the resolution by the city council, we plan to refine and promote the pledge program and move forward with hopefully having a banner and other ways to promote and get the engagement of the business community.
Are there any questions from city council?
No questions, just applauding your work. It's been, what, six years now? And I had the privilege of voting on the resolution that established the CRC. I think your work has been great. I think this is a wonderful step forward. And it's very, very timely that we should be talking about civility first on the eve of an election.
And thank you for all your community work. Many times at different events in Durango, the CRC will be there with their table, with their information, talking to city residents. And so I really appreciate the extra efforts. Besides just going to a meeting, you're out in the community. And that means, that means a lot.
And it might say with our ears, too. Because I think that's a really important part of what we do, is try to listen.
Thank you very much for coming forward tonight. Thank you. On the 4.6, I'm going to move for approval of 4.6 and look for a second. A roll call, please. Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Bateen?
Yes.
Councillor Bricky?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury? Yes. And we're moving to 4.7.
Yes, I found, I think would be useful to have, you know, get a little more information about this. I had a couple of questions that came to my mind as we, as I read through it. It should, I suppose it would make sense to have at least a brief presentation about what we're talking about for the audience.
Well, unfortunately, I didn't know you'd be pulling this. So the city has a contract with CDOT. And we have the obligation of maintaining drainage along 160 and 550. In spite of Governor Hickenlooper's executive order saying no unfunded mandates, we still have to take care of that. But did you have a specific question?
Well, one of the questions I had was, actually, what is the cost of that maintenance? And the other question was, my reading of the ordinance says that that would be, put the city in a responsible position for maintaining the vegetation on these drainage facilities, which include the medians and the island where the erstwhile Ark of History sat.
Do you have something on that, Amber?
And Dirk, you've read this IGA a number of times, so if you want to chime in, feel free. So yes, it does put us, we have been maintaining the permanent water quality features. We do in a number of locations. That's through the MS4 program. The agreement that we have with CDOT is that table rules trump. And so based on city finances, the funding and the maintenance to those will be per council's adoption of the budget. And it's typically Levi's crew that goes out there and does weed maintenance, unless Kathy, do you still have the weed crews? So between Kathy and Levi, we have maintenance of those facilities. It's programmed with CDOT. We can get you the schedule, if you're interested in the schedule. I don't believe we have that for this year. This is one of the newer agreements that we have with CDOT. They're seeking to formalize our processes with them for facilities like this, snow plow, and other agreements, so that when we have a shared area, they pay for the construction and then it's within the local jurisdictions responsibility to do maintenance. So this is the first IGA that we've entered into for this water quality permanent features.
But this is similar to the agreements that we've have with major developments where, for example, Twin Buttes, where the construction was paid for by the developers and with the mill levy for the subsequent residents. But then the city takes over responsibility for maintaining the streets. And, but I think since we have received emails about the, perhaps weed growth in some of these areas, that having this agreement formalized puts it in our backyard.
Anything else?
That would, you know, that was the issue. With that, I'd be happy to move that we approve Resolution R. 201846.
I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Councillor Bateen?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Bricky?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury? Yes. We're moving into public participation. This section of the agenda is set aside for the public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that do not otherwise appear on this agenda. City council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to the city council. Citizens wishing to speak during this section of the agenda shall sign in prior to the start of the meeting identifying their name and address on the form provided at the meeting. Citizens will be called individually by name by the mayor to come to the podium to address the city council. Comments are limited to three minutes. The city manager will signal 30 seconds remaining by raising his hand. Any audiovisual materials must be provided to the city clerk on or before noon of the day of the meeting. And Mr. Michael Shea, would you please come to the podium?
Good evening. Can you talk about the proposed accessory dwelling units?
If you would, state your address, please.
2012 Highland Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay. First, I'm going to talk about the proposed ordinance for accessory dwelling units in EN 4, 5, and 6, specifically Crestview, which is EN 4. I'd like to thank Mayor Marbury for your acknowledgement of receiving our ongoing petitions against the ADUs in our subdivision and entering them into public record. I have six additional petitions, since I emailed you them on Friday, three received today, and three over the weekend. So far, we have 66 written petitions, which are resident property owners. I spoke in opposition on ADUs at the September council meeting. Crestview is a single-family development. Our covenants are binding legal obligations and agreements written within our deeds. Furthermore, Land Use Development Code, Section 2-12-1, says establish neighborhoods Crestview and Eden. EN 4, protect the character and functionality integrity of the Crestview and Eden neighborhoods. LUDC, Section 3-1-1-1, purpose of article, intent of EN districts, the intent of the EN zones is to protect the quality and character of the city's established neighborhoods. After I spoke on that September meeting, I was very upset to hear Amy Brand speak, who has an illegal ADU and who was asked to speak by the city for support of the ADUs, contrary to current LUDC regulations and laws. The city should be, should take legal action against her. The city planners have stated that they are aware of multiple illegal ADUs. How many is the city pursuing legal action against thus far? Please provide us with a list of the illegal ADUs and multifamilies. You can send the list to our Crestview email, which you have. So in conclusion, I'd like to say to please exclude Crestview from your proposed ADU ordinance in name and enforce the ordinances that are in place. Thank you.
Donna Graves, please come to the podium. Did you want to leave your petitions, Mr. Shea, with the city clerk?
The new ones are...
Yes, sir. Whatever you, documentation that you have.
My name is Donna Graves. I live at 2228 Crestview Avenue Drive. Lived up there for over 20 years. I really like the character of our neighborhood, the single-family residential. I feel like it would be a real imposition on the current residents up there to allow ADUs. As Michael's pointed out, it is part of our covenants. That's why we bought our homes up there. We love the character of our neighborhood and would like to preserve that. My husband and I both feel that allowing ADUs would create congestion, crowding, more traffic, and really undesirable conditions in our neighborhood. So I would like to go on record as in opposition to that. Thank you for the opportunity.
Judy and Jim Wenzel?
Hi, Judy and Jim Wenzel, 114 Meadow Ridge Trail, on the Falls Creek Ranch. We are here, very pleased, to come to tell you about something very important that we brought to Durango. It's a national campaign called The Spirit of 45. The Spirit of 45 is an alliance of organizations that have come together to honor the legacy of the men and women who were historically called the greatest generation of America. And in that regard, these are also achievements and values that they had in the World War II era that we would like very much to see passed on and continued amongst our youth particularly, and then future generations of our nation. We, you will probably remember, this is a banner that we made up for the parade, the Veterans Day Parade, keep the spirit of 45 alive. And if you remember, there were 16 million men and women who fought on foreign soil. And the point of that being that who was left behind? And that was the women who took the place of the men who were fighting overseas. And so on the home front, they're collectively called Rosie the Riveters. And I'm sure everyone's familiar with Rosie the Riveter. It's a general term. My mom was a Rosie the Riveter. So that was the big weed gap in the workforce they took the place of. So on the 11th of November, we will have a presentation to the residents of Durango, and it's called March with a Hero. And what this is, is the Girl Scouts of Durango have gotten together to carry photo posters. And there's a picture here that you'll probably be able to see on the Veterans Day Parade. Thank you. So they're going to carry a photo poster of local families and community members who were veterans, World War II veterans. So this is my dad, Colonel Beck. And so there will be quite a few of the Girl Scouts honoring our veterans, men and women. We have a nurse who has also served. So that's, that's kind of what we wanted to just let you know. I hope all of you will have time to come and enjoy the parade and watch the Girl Scouts. They're very proud to be the first introduction of this national effort to Durango.
Thank you very much for coming tonight and sharing the spirit of 45 with our community.
Thank you. And also, I have some handouts to leave behind for you. But it says on here talks about the alliance that we formed in Durango already. So you can look at that at your leisure. But there are quite a few, and there are more to come.
Thank you very much.
I'll leave that with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Kim Baxter?
I'm doing okay, man.
You were great. You were great.
Hi, I'm Kim Baxter, 1393 East Third Avenue. And I'm so excited that the FLC bike group was here tonight because I wanted to talk about my experience up on Durango Mesa a couple of weekends ago for the state high school mountain bike championships, which Durango did a fabulous job in. And one of the things I realized about the Durango Mesa area is what an economic and cultural asset that area is. And the number of people that came in for that event. The city was full Friday, Saturday, Sunday. A lot of activity downtown. It was fabulous. The city's working on the Durango Mesa area plan, which includes cultural, music, athletic activity areas, as well as the county working on that plan, too. And the county has identified $3 million for the initial phase of that plan to go forward for next year. I'm concerned that at this point, the city has not dedicated funds for Phase 1 in their 2019 budget or the capital improvement projects. And so I would like to have you please consider this in your budget discussions that you'll be continuing over the next few weeks. The Katz family has been generous enough to give us an opportunity that I think the sooner we take advantage of it, the better for our economic and cultural vitality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Caroline Knight?
Hi, I'm Caroline, 12 Hidden Trevor. I'm the community ambassador for Durango High School. I came in September. I didn't come in October because of homecoming, but you should expect me once a month from now on. So, but my job is to just update city council once a month on activities happening at DHS. So that's what I'm here to do. So in October, student council ran homecoming and saw huge participation from the students. Since then, we've turned our focus more towards community service projects. So we did Raking Rec, where we went throughout town and raked people's yards for them. And then we're also focusing on serving Thanksgiving lunch at the Durango Senior Center and bringing Project Merry Christmas to DHS in the next couple of months. DHS's theater troupe had their opening weekend of 9:00 to 5:00 musical. Additional show dates are November 9, 10, 15, and 16 at 10:00. Additional show dates are November 9th, 10th, 15th, and 16th at 7:00 p.m., with a matinee performance on November 10th at 2:00 p.m., and you can get your tickets at troupe1096.webly.com. For the first time in Durango High School history, the Red Pride Band plays as finalists in state with an overall result of fourth place. And otherwise, all sports are wrapping up, and football has a playoff game in Erie, or against Erie on Saturday. El Diablo Student Newspaper came out with their first issue of the year in mid-October. So, if you haven't already, pick up a copy at a local business downtown or at DHS. And their second issue is expected to come out in a couple of weeks. Finally, if you have a project you think student council could be involved in, or otherwise you have any comments you'd like our student representatives to hear, please email me at Or, you can also reach out to my advisor, Dale Garland. I think a lot of you know him, but he will pass his, my information on to you, or your information on to me, either one. But that is all I have for you. Thank you.
Caroline, the next city council meeting will be on Monday, November the 19th, because of Thanksgiving week, just to let you know. Normally, we're on Tuesdays, but because of election and Thanksgiving, we have moved it, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. John Simpson.
Mayor Marbury, John Simpson, 1831 Crestview Drive. First of all, I'd like to say I'm supportive of Mr. Shea and Mrs. Graves, that they're opposition of the ADUs in EN4, specifically Crestview. The reason I'm here is something a little different. An effective municipal financial system must include as much possible input as possible from the public. The city of Durango can do a better job bringing in the people of Durango to help with the process. First, the financial awards that are cited every year are nothing more than participation awards. You pay a small fee to Government Finance Officials Association, or GFOA. As long as the budget is reasonably understandable, you get an award. The people who review your budget are not charged to make suggestions as to the content of the budget. A phone call last week to GFOA revealed that less than two percent of the applicants fail this test. When it was explained that the city of Durango was using the GFOA awards to deflect citizen criticism, GFOA said that was the opposite of the award's intent. Budgets are reviewed for predefined criteria with the intent of making the budgets easier to understand and to encourage substantive citizen input. Much has been said about the fact that you receive a clean audit every year. A clean audit means nothing more than the money was able to be tracked. It says nothing about the money was used wisely. A clean audit is a prerequisite to citizen input, and like budget and CAFRA awards, should not be used to deflect citizen input. The city of Durango does not have a citizen budget advisory committee. If 2A passes tomorrow, creation of this commission is a must, because there must be accountability that such a large sum of money is being spent responsibly. This can't be a commission, like you manage now, where citizens who don't agree with the city manager are pressured by the city council to resign or are not selected by the commission. I recommend you see how Golden runs their budget commission, because their selection process for the budget advisory commission keeps citizens at the top of the org chart. They also start reviewing finances from the prior year in January, rather than waiting till July, as the city of Durango does. Remember, don't allow the participation awards from GFOA to lull you into a false sense of security, who are doing everything possible to effectively manage our money. Mayor Marbury?
Amos Swanyay, perhaps? All right, thank you.
My name's Amos Swanyay. I live at 2013 Highland Avenue, and I'd like to join my neighbors in opposition to the ADUs. I want to thank the commission for hearing our, speak tonight and our position. If I would summarize my objection to the ADUs in some simple words, it's just more people generally tend to lead to more problems. I had the unique experience in college, I lived on Eighth Avenue and in that neighborhood. And Crestview really has a very special character, and I think a lot of that is driven by who occupies the neighborhood. Specifically, over on Eighth Avenue, we, on weekends, we would have to employ a fan or some other type of noise cancellation, because it had a much larger rural population. And that population tend to, and granted, it was near the college, but they tend to party on the weekends, and we would have to drown out the noise a lot of times late in the evening, simply because we could hear keg stands being counted out and other just rather loud partying situations. Now, I'm not saying all renters bring that to the table, but when you open up a community to more renters, you definitely deal with more traffic, you deal with less parking, you deal with, with a lot more people in the community. You know, we, we live on the trail system, and it gets tremendous use, and there's also a bit of a homeless situation that we have going behind our house. And, you know, all of these things really tend to add up to diminish the character of the neighborhood. Moving from that side of town to our neighborhood now, it was a wonderful change, and we really loved the way our, we live next to families and we, you know, everything is quiet at night, there's very little traffic. Every now and then, I'll have to go into town early in the morning, and Ninth Street Bridge sometimes can be a real barrier just to get across. And, and I understand that, you know, there's all these issues that you guys have to address, but I would like some special consideration for our neighborhood, in the sense that it seems to me the only real neighborhood in Durango. Everywhere else that I've been, and I've lived in Durango since 1991, so I've been here for almost thirty years, seems to have a little bit of a disconjointed or kind of a mixed match of people. Or Crestview's really family-based. It's, it's unique in the sense that they're all single-family homes, and we all have this little quiet lifestyle, and it's something that I think we're all trying to preserve when we stand up in opposition. We, I think we all recognize that you have to find some affordable housing, but we're just asking for our neighborhood to be excluded from the ADUs, and I thank the commission.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify with you. The existing ADU ordinance means that the owner of the property must live on the property, not a rental. So, I just wanted to share that with you, because we have successful ADUs in EN1, EN2, and EN3.
Well, and I assume that the owner would rent the space out to a renter.
Could be a son, could be a grandma, who knows? That's really up to the private individual. But the owner would live in the front unit or the back unit.
Well-
So, I'm just sharing with you, this is the current law that we have in Durango.
Well, and, and it's been my understanding and communicating with a lot of people in my neighborhood, that the purpose of the ADUs is to help offset the living costs of the neighborhood, and the sense that you're getting rental income to help pay for your house.
Could be.
And traditionally, that would come in the form of renters.
I know a grandmother that lives with her son and his family in an ADU. So, just sharing, there's all kinds of stories out there. But it does, this is the ordinance in the city of Durango, that the owner of the property, what you were describing was rentals on the, on the other side of town.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that you understood that our system has the owner on one of the pieces of property.
That's certainly a plus. But we, I'd still oppose the idea of having a rental population in my neighborhood.
All right, thank you very much. We are moving into legislative and policy-related hearings. Eight point one point one is a public hearing to consider the proposed 2019 budget and discussion regarding highway user tax funds. Ms. Brown, would you like to say anything about the GOFA award, since Mr. Simpson brought it up?
Yeah, let me get this going. It's okay.
Since you're there. Oh, what a shame he left. What do you think, Ms. Brown?
So, I mean, there's two different awards. There's the, the GFOA award for the CAFRA and the GFOA award for the budget. And the CAFRA is one to make sure that we have clean audits, that we're representing the finance, financial picture of the city and all of its different funds. And so, that award is handed out, he, you know, brought up the point that two percent of the people that apply don't get approved. They are approved, and there's our reviewers in different cities that review them, and then they review them at the GFOA as well. And not everyone applies, because they are difficult to get. They are very difficult to achieve, so not a lot of cities go that far to try and get those awards, because it is not an easy process to get through. I don't know if you want to add?
Well, the only analogy I would point out is, some people have an engineering degree and some get a PE, which means they have to test out and demonstrate their skills. Every city's required to do a budget, and these are indicative of doing it well. And the people who review our documents are professionals from across the country, who are expert in municipal finance.
So, our, thank you very much for that. I'm so sorry that Mr. Simpson left and didn't listen to your information concerning that award. And so, now, are you, I'm at eight point one point one, the highway user tax fund.
Yeah, this is a public hearing, a public hearing to consider the city manager's proposed 2019 budget, as well as the use of the highway users.
Okay, thank you.
So, the 2019 proposed operating budget is in the amount of ninety-one million, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-and-forty dollars. It includes operating expenditures, interfund transfers, and transfers to the capital improvement program. The capital improvement funds comprise of an additional twenty-nine million, two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars in expenditures. As city council is aware, the budgeting process for the city takes several months. City departments began working on the capital improvements in June, and they began working on their operating budgets in July of the summer. City council set and adopted goals on June 5th. A public workshop on the budget was held on July 25th. On September 25th, the city manager submitted the proposed fiscal year 2019 budget to city council. Several hours of meetings were held in the last month to discuss the entire budget. Today, we are at the public hearing for this proposed budget. The proposed budget and budget funding priorities reflect the city council goals. There are four main goals with several objectives and priorities under each. Overall, the proposed operating expenditure budgets are increasing by thirteen point eight percent. The general fund operating expenditures are proposed to increase two point three percent. Sales tax growth is projected at zero percent over 2018 adopted budget. Lodger's tax increase is projected at a decrease of six point five percent under 2018 adopted budget. The 2019 proposed budget does have a three percent rate increase program in, in the three, in three enterprise funds, the water and sewer funds and the sustainable services fund. The airport fund has several capital projects proposed to address capital needs. The transportation services fund continues to struggle to remain fiscally sustainable with looming decreased grant revenues from the state and federal government. There is one new position proposed in the 2019 budget. The city's workforce will, will therefore expand by one new FTE. The sewer fund is proposing to add a fog technician to its 2019 budget. As seen on the slide, the general fund, the largest operating budget is the general fund, which is about forty-five percent of the entire operating budget. Water and sewer fund operating expenditures account for an initial, for the additional twenty-five percent of the operating funds. Airport and transportation, each comprised of about four percent of the expenditures, followed by the sustainable services fund at three percent. Personnel services equate to about thirty-five point five percent of all operating funds, or approximately thirty-two point six million dollars. Contractual services, which include items such as contracts and professional services, account for about thirty-eight point five percent of operating expenditures. Capital outlays approximately twenty-one point eight percent, which includes transfer of operating funds to the capital improvement funds. Supplies make up the remaining four point two percent of operating funds. The general fund revenues are budgeted to increase three point five percent. There's no city sales tax growth over the 2018 adopted budget. Licenses and permits are declining about seven point six percent, and charges for services are increasing about one point one percent. As stated before, the expenditures in the general fund are increasing two point three percent. Personnel-related expenditures increase about one point three million, due mainly to the shift of salaries due to the cost allocation plan and increased health insurance cost. Again, no new FTEs and no capital improvement projects for the general fund. The proposed general fund revenue, fifty-four percent is sales tax revenue, which, as we all know, is economically sensitive and very elastic. Property tax makes up about seven percent of the revenue. Intergovernmental revenue is about six percent, and charges for services are about eleven Sales and use tax continue to struggle due to the impacts of the 416 fire this summer. Sales tax has seen five months of decreased revenue over 2018 so far, or over 2017 so far in 2018. It is currently one point two percent over 2017 collections through September. This is a graph showing general fund operating and capital expenditures since 2010. As you can see, the white portion at the top of the bars are, are the capital expenditures that we have, and as you can see in 2019 in the general fund, there is no capital expenditures with very limited amounts in 2018. The general fund expenditures, the largest is public safety, which is our police department, our contract with Durango Fire Protection District, and the 911 center. Just over fourteen point seven million. General government was eight point six million. Parks and Rec is eight point two million. Streets is about three point nine million. Libraries about two point three, and then community support next year is proposed at seven hundred and fifty-two thousand. Just to highlight what we have done with our capital investments since 2007, so as you can see, prior to the recession in 2007, we were spending about four million dollars on capital improvements. The next five years dropped down during the recession as we tried to pull out of that recession into 2012 and 13. 2014 has a large expenditures, about five million, because city council at that point pulled money out of fund balance to help fund some street improvements and the street projects during 14 and 15. And as you've seen, our operating expenditures keep going up, and our capital expenditures are declining as we move forward with a hundred and fifty thousand in 2018 and nothing programmed for 2019. We have several special revenue funds. These funds are restricted by, either by voters or by ordinance. They are, they account for all restricted funds, and we manage six of these special revenue funds. The 2015 sales tax fund, which is the half cent, quarter, I'm losing my mind here, it's a quarter cent, actually, it is a half cent. The road impact fee fund, which the majority of those funds are going to pay debt service on the Florida road. Durango tourism fund, which handles the lodger's tax of two percent. Conservation trust fund is lottery funds that we receive from the state and can only be fund, used on parks and rec projects. The storm drainage fund and the park development fund as well.
And the library's also in the 205 sales tax.
No, it is not. It is in the general fund.
The general fund?
Yep. So, there are three special revenue, revenue funds in 2019 that have expenditures proposed. The 2015 sales tax fund has about five million dollars transferring to the capital projects fund for projects. The road impact fund is supplying two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that debt service payment on Florida road. And then, the Durango tourism fund has one point two million in expenditures. As we talked a little bit earlier, the Durango tourism fund, that lodger's tax projection is at six and a half percent decrease under 2018 adopted budget. And the expenditures, there is funding in there for transit, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The majority of the funds go to the Durango area tourism office, and we've increased their funding by three percent. And then, there's a transfer of a hundred thousand to the general fund to support those special events that bring out-of-town visitors into the Durango, like the Fourth of July event.
Excuse me, Julie, isn't, shouldn't the general revenue, special revenue funds include the 2005 sales tax?
There, it's a capital project fund. It's later on in the project. It's not a special revenue. It's actually, it is a special revenue, but it's considered a capital improvement fund.
Okay.
The way it's set up. The city operates four internal service funds, the general services fund, the capital equipment replacement fund, and the risk manager fund and the self-insurance fund. Internal service funds are used to account for the financing of goods and services provided primarily by one city department to another at a cost reimbursement basis. The self-insurance fund is the largest internal service fund. Capital equipment replacement fund accounts for the maintenance and replacement of all vehicles that are in the SURF program. The risk manager- The risk manager fund manages the property and casualty insurance as well as the workers' compensation insurance. The city operates five enterprise funds, the water fund, the sewer fund, the sustainable services fund, airport fund, and the transportation services fund. The largest enterprise fund is the sewer fund currently at twelve million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand. Water fund is ten million, seven hundred and eighteen. Transportation services is just over three point eight million. The airport fund is about three point seven million, and sustainable services is about two point nine million.
And just for the community to remember that the enterprise funds, it's a business the city runs, and they pay their own way through the fees.
So, the water fund, we're projecting the revenues to decrease about point five percent over about fifty thousand dollars. There is a program three percent rate increase for both residential and commercial users. Operating expenditures are decreasing by eight point six percent to about four point three million. There are no staffing changes, and there's a transfer to capital projects of about three point five million, largely due to fifty percent cost of the administration of back-to-garage project that we have programmed in 2019. The sewer fund revenues are increasing about two point four percent. Again, a three percent rate increase for residential and commercial users is programmed. Um, operating expenditures are increasing about eighteen, eighteen point one percent. We are proposing a new fog technician in that fund, the only position we're proposing this year. In the capital, um, it's about three point eight million that's being transferred, and then we are also have debt service payments of just under three point four million for the new Santa Rita water reclamation facility. And just a reminder, um, that Santa Rita water reclamation facility is our largest infrastructure project in our history, and you can still view that live cam at Durango, like, live camera at durangogub.org/ SantaRitaWRF. The airport enterprise fund has a total revenue increase of about ten point one percent. They are increasing so much fees and charges at the airport. Parking revenues, um, are increasing about one point two percent. It is our largest revenue generator at the airport is parking. Their operating expenditures are increasing nine point eight percent. There are no staffing changes. They are transferring about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to address several small-scale, um, projects on the airport property. And they also have eight point six million dollars in funded projects from FAA, passenger facility chargers, customer facility charges, charges taxiway construction of about seven point nine million dollars. The sustainable services fund, the revenues are increasing four point six percent. Um, residential and commercial solid waste and recycling is programmed at a three percent rate increase. Operating expenditures are decreasing about three percent. No staffing changes, and there's transfer of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to capital projects fund, the largest project being those bear-proof trashcans. Transportation services enterprise fund, the revenues are increasing four point six percent, but their federal grant funding is decreasing two point seven percent. Parking meters remains, revenues remain stable, and the proposed operating budget decreases two point eight percent. As we've talked about many times, the fund still is not financially sustainable, and we are transferring some funds to capital projects fund to fund some new upgrades on some parking meters. So, multi-year projects, capital projects funds, we have the airport construction fund, the capital projects fund, open space parks and trails fund, and the capital improvement fund. The capital projects fund, which includes the water fund, capital projects, sewer fund capital projects, the 2015 capital projects, and the general fund capital projects is about fifteen point nine million. The open space parks and trails fund is about two point one five six million in projects. Capital improvements Fund is two point four million, and that's all a hundred percent debt service on Florida road and the library. And then the airport construction fund has eight point seven million in projects programmed. State law requires that the budget hearing process also addresses the proposed uses of the highway users' tax funds distributed to local governments from the gasoline taxes imposed and collected by the state. These funds must be used for street purposes. The city spends substantially more on its streets than it receives from highway users' taxes. In 2019, the distribution to the city from these taxes is approximately five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. In comparison, the 2019 proposed operating budget for streets in the general fund is three point eight million. Areas where highway users' tax funds may be used in 2018 include overlays, chip sealing, crosswalk striping, sign replacement, snow removal. Next steps, so today, we're at the public hearing, um, for the proposed budget. During budget meetings in the last several weeks, council has set aside, um, many items in the proposed budget that they would like to discuss further on, in half further detail. Those items are set to be discussed on November 27th. After budget reconciliation on the 27th, the budget adoption and adoption of appropriations ordinance will occur on December 4th, with a mill levy being certified to La Plata County by December 15th. Thank you for attending the public hearing on the 2019 proposed budget. It is the recommendation of city manager and myself that city council by motion take public comment this evening and direct staff to prepare the budget resolution to be approved at the December 4th, 2018 city council meeting.
Well, I'm going to open up the public testimony, and would anyone from the public like to come and ask questions about the budget? Step right up! And just to clarify, that boards and commissions are interviewed and appointed by the city council, that is not a function of the city manager. Ms. Baxter, would you please introduce yourself?
Hi, Kim Baxter, 1393 East Third Avenue. I just wanted to reiterate what I mentioned in public comment that I'd like us to find some funds in our 2019 budget or capital improvements plan for the Durango Mesa area plan to get that ongoing, to get Mark Katz's dream envisioned.
And that would really be through the Parks and Rec Department, I understand?
I don't know where the city might decide to find those funds.
Well, you know, 2A is, um, really would make a difference to everyone's life, and so we really don't know what's going to happen tonight. But, as you know, we have worked very hard on 2A.
Yes, but as you said, um, it appears that the funds for those type of allocations might come through Parks and Rec, so you'll have to make those decisions.
We appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come and speak to the council or ask questions about the public hearing for the budget tonight? Seeing none, I will close the public testimony and ask for questions from council. Just to know that, um, city manager, uh, why don't we start working on the budget in January? I heard that tonight, that another town...
Jillis?
No, he said January, that Golden starts in January. Um, can you just review for the public?
We will work on the budget every month.
Well, thank you for that information. It's not like all of a sudden it's June or July and now it's time to think about a budget.
Correct.
All right, well, thank you for that. Questions from city council?
We have, um, it's worthwhile reiterating to the public that we had an all-day retreat a couple of weeks ago where we reviewed, uh, departmental requests in, in great detail. And so, we've had a chance to ask the questions, and by, by this time, there are, there are, as Ms. Brown indicated, uh, some outstanding issues that the city, that the council will have to reconcile, uh, at the study session, study session later this month.
And we also had other study sessions where other departments came and addressed city council, so it didn't happen just in one day, it happened over a period of time.
I, I would, um, also clarify that the city council is elected to represent the people of Durango, and the decision you make on the budget is probably your most important responsibility as an elected official, and that's the way our former government works. Uh, at the national level, Congress has the appropriations powers, and a lot of that initiated in the House, because that's considered more of the people's representatives. Uh, and in city government, the council can receive advice from appointed boards and commissions, uh, and as the finance director, um, pointed out, the special revenue funds have boards that by a vote of the people in Durango, um, those special revenues must be presented, those expenditures must be presented to those boards, who then recommend to the council. So, there is citizen...
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Advisory boards, and we have great input from utilities commission, natural lands, parks and rec, multimodal...
Airport?
Airport, advise, uh, the, um, library advisory board, uh, so it, it's, um, it is happening, yeah.
So, we have, um, contrary to the citizen that was at the podium, um, we do have citizen input from all of our boards and commissions. Uh, all projects, all, all budgets are presented, explained, they ask questions, there's usually five on most of the boards. Uh, the lady in Parks and Rec has seven, is that right, Chris?
Yeah.
They have seven individuals, and so they, they all have inquiring minds, and they all are citizens that step right up and ask those hard questions of the staff.
It's, it's also important to know that the city council has set very high standards for transparency. So, in this budget, the money coming in is known to everybody, is known to the public. There are no secret funds, there is, there's nothing hidden from the public, and that transparency is a standard that should apply throughout this government.
Um, I have to agree with you. Uh, we, it's very transparent. Ask any board member, uh, ask any city councillor if you have questions. So, we have lots of input.
But, like, it's also a lot of work from each of the department heads who are challenged to, uh, uh, create efficiencies within each of their departments, and, uh, this year it was particularly difficult for each of those department heads to bring us a budget, uh, to, to do their part in achieving the balanced budget that has been presented to us, so. With that, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Any other comments from the councillors that are here that have worked so hard with the staff on the budget? And we certainly want to thank, uh, Ms. Brown and her finance department for their preparation, and I really would like to thank all of the department heads. That's from the police department to the airport, to, um, every department head, Parks and Rec, the library, and all of the boards that contributed to the overall budget process. It's not, it doesn't just happen behind closed doors, it happens with a lot of input from many, many people for many, many months.
And, but, one of the opportunities that the public has for that input is the overall budget presentation that the manager does in July, uh, which is typically has a attendance of maybe not as large as we have here tonight, and I'm seeing nine people in the audience, almost all of whom are city employees. Um, and the, uh, then this hearing is also another opportunity, and we've heard from, from, uh, one person who's input we appreciate. But I think these are opportunities, the, the July meeting is when, when, before things have actually been coalesced into a balanced budget. Uh, the big challenge that goes through this is that city departments each propose what they would like to do in the, in the coming year, and, um, typically, uh, you know, council doesn't see that part, part of the process, but our understanding is that there are millions of dollars worth of additional requests beyond what can be accommodated with the available revenue. And, uh, staff, uh, the senior staff and the manager has to do a lot of grinding to put that into the shape of a balanced budget. Citizen requests early in that process before those departmental recommendations, uh, come forward, uh, would have a better chance of moving, moving the dial than comments, uh, at this late date in the process.
And I know from, uh, my experience has been that there are three boards that work together, multimodal, natural lands, and parks and rec, and they come together usually in the spring and talk about projects and, um, give their input into staff. I will look for a motion from the council.
There's no motion today.
Oh, well, you got to say something.
Actually, do we simply, do we need a motion to direct staff, or...
That says no formal, take public comment? Well, we all love it, how's that? It's not going to go forward.
And this removes the public hearing regarding the highway users' tax fund only?
No, this is, this is the budget.
Budget resolution to be approved in December. Okay, stay tuned, see you in December then.
All right. And then, three point two, three point one.
Okay, Ms. Brown?
So, as part of the annual budgeting process and compliance with Article 5, Section 6 of the city charter, the city council shall adopt the final budget in a timely manner prior to the start of the ensuing budget year and pass the necessary appropriation ordinance. The adoption of appropriation ordinance generally coincides with the approval of the city's budget for the ensuing year. The appropriation ordinance establishes the legal spending limits for the city. The amounts appropriated to each fund cannot exceed the amounts approved for each fund as set forth in the resolution adopting the budget. Total appropriations requested in the 2019 proposed budget are one hundred and twenty-one million, one hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars. That figure includes ninety-one million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand and forty dollars for operations and interfund transfers to the capital projects funds, and twenty-nine million, two seventy-five, five ninety-one for the capital improvement program. There is no fiscal impact associated with conducting a public hearing. Action on the final adoption of appropriation ordinance will authorize spending and the amounts indicated above or as amended by the city council.
Thank you. Okay, it's a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Questions from council? None? Okay.
Question, I would...
No questions, we need to direct the staff. Who would like to say that?
We should direct the staff to prepare the appropriation ordinance, uh, to be introduced at the December 4th meeting, city council meeting, along with the budget resolution itself, or budget ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
That, that's fine, I didn't mean to interrupt either the motion or the second. We're doing the reconciliation on the 27th, and we don't know the outcome tomorrow. Uh, there may be more work or less work depending on the result of 2A. Uh, so, on the 27th, when we have the reconciliation, there may not be enough time depending on how many changes are made to be ready for the 4th, which would necessitate a special meeting the following week, and I, I think for everyone's convenience, probably a, um, special meeting right before the study session on the 11th, since you're all going to be here anyway, that, that might be the, instead of coming on a different night, that might be the way to, to handle that.
I think we can agree to that.
December 11th.
December the 11th, put it just on your calendars, and we'll...
And maybe we can get it all done on the 4th, but I just wanted to...
Okay.
Uh, bring that up in case there's more, uh, more to it based on tomorrow's, um, results.
And just as a reminder, the general revenue fund has no projects, no new employees. The enterprise funds, they pay their own way, there's only one employee, and that's oil and grease, so hope you find that special person. Uh, with that, we will move into an introduction of ordinances.
You didn't vote.
Sorry?
We need to get...
Oh, thanks, let's vote. Okay, roll call, please. Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Pateen?
Yep.
Councillor Bricky?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury?
Yes.
Now, we'll go to 10.1, an ordinance for the purposes of amending the zoning of real property located within the city of Durango, Colorado pursuant to Chapter 27, Section 6323 and 2126 of the Code of Ordinances, city of Durango, and declaring an effective date.
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is ordinance, uh, O-2018-23. This is a follow-up on an item that had a public hearing some time ago. The agenda documentation for that hearing inadvertently did not include the typical direction to prepare an ordinance, so this is following up on that at this point, so this ordinance is, uh, following up on a hearing that was previously conducted. Uh, it is, uh, against any zoning, so that's about all I have to say about that.
All right, I...
What's the ordinance number?
Number?
Uh, 23, O-2018-23.
I'll look for a motion from council.
I move, we approve ordinance, uh, O-2018-23.
23.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Councillor Pateen?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Bricky?
Mayor Marbury?
Yes. And that does conclude the business...
Yes.
And that does conclude the business of the Durango City Council, we'll see you on Monday. Oh, no, we're sure not going to conclude. Let's do council reports and actions! Woo-hoo! Okay, who would like to start?
I would like to pass.
You're passing, who's starting? Councillor Bricky?
Um...
You're okay? Councillor White?
I just want to reiterate that I'm continuing my here-to-hear meetings most Thursdays at 11:30 a.m. There's, I will be there this week, there's a possible conflict for me next week, and I certainly won't be there Thanksgiving Day, but those are, I'm back to City Hall since the steaming bean is no longer available in the mornings. There have been a couple of recent meetings that are worth mentioning, the Economic Summit on the 24th of October, as well as the joint meeting of the Multimodal Parks and Rec and Natural Lands Board to discuss e-bikes, which I believe we'll be having that ordinance coming up next, our hearing next time. And the, on the Monday, the 29th, I attended the, as with the mayor, the public meeting to, where staff introduced the proposed changes to the sign code before it moves forward to the City Council for consideration. And I have to note that if Amendment 74 passes tomorrow, that whole effort may be entirely wasted, because the enforceability of any city codes would be rendered doubtful by Amendment 74. So if, for those of you who may not yet have voted, and it's a long, complicated ballot, and there's pretty good reasons to procrastinate that, I would once again urge, as the City Council has, in fact, passed a resolution to oppose Amendment 74.
Thank you. I'm going to mention that the Durango Independent Film Festival will have a showing November the 17th at Teata during Native American Heritage Month, and Cindy Pickett will be here, she is in the film. Cindy is a friend of mine, actually, and she is a television and movie star. If you ever saw Ferris Bueller, well, she was in that one, as well as different television shows. So Cindy will be here on November the 17th at the Anima City Theater, tickets are available. Also, the mayor was the face at the congregation, Har Shalom, to represent the city during, to speak about, to remember the victims of the Pittsburgh murders. And also, I was the face at the Durango Cycling Event, so the mayor, there's others, I don't always mention them, but the mayor's, the mayor keeps a pretty busy, active calendar. Let's see, I think that's, oh, I have some presentations. If my assistant will hit that slide, I wanted to show the public what you get when you vote. And so I've asked the staff to prepare, thank you, Ms. Blake, for preparing this slide. A citizen has said, hey, let's just take this money from 205 and reuse it for a police station. Well, remember, we voted on that in 2005, and so there is debt service, you heard that mentioned earlier, on the Florida Road and the library, and that runs until about 2026, so that would be difficult to reauthorize. And then on the 205, it talked about, well, there's the parks, open space, trails, and these were some of the activities that happened with our quarter cent sales tax. And would you read those for the audience, please?
Sure. Dalamoun Park, 178-acre acquisition, Jenkin Ranch Park development, Chapman Hill Snow Making, Chapman Hill Rink, ART, swinging bridge reconstruction, Ria Open Space 5-acre acquisition, La Plata Open Space Conservancy 1-acre acquisition, park and trail improvements, Mason Center Tennis Court resurface, Dalamoun Park fuels reduction, parks, open space, trails and recreation master plan, off-leash parking lot development, Anima's Riverbank stabilization, 9th Street to Highway 160, Whitewater Park development, First Presbyterian Church, 240-acre acquisition, Fort Lewis Foundation, Fort Lewis College Foundation 240-acre acquisition, FLC Foundation 115-acre acquisition, FLC Board of Trustees 367-acre acquisition, Cliff Rock 200-acre acquisition, continuing on for the 2005 Parks, Open Space and Trails Quarter Cent, Crater 223-acre acquisition, Fort Lewis College Smith Complex development, transfer to General Fund for maintenance of new parks and open space acquired since 2005, Santa Rita Properties 26-acre acquisition, Twin Buttes fuels reduction, raw water parks irrigation system installation, Chapman Hill Storage Building construction, CU Purple Cliffs 38-acre acquisition, Rasdel 89-acre acquisition, Horse Gulch Trailhead construction, Sherman .39-acre acquisition, Kulte .74-acre acquisition, PD Atric Partners 1.63-acre acquisition, Dalarator Ridge 87.4-acre acquisition, Hidden Valley 50.5-acre acquisition, City Park signage, Horse Gulch Progressive Trail construction, Oxco Park and Preserve map study, Fastbinder Park Playground, Junction Creek Bridge reconstruction, Needham Park Trees, Riverview Elementary School Playground, portable fencing for athletic fields, continuing 2005 post-quarter cent. Folsom Park Playground, River Access Design, Open Space Annexation, Walker .52-acre acquisition, Natural Service Trails Construction, Santa Rita Park Playground, Geological Overlook on College Mesa Construction, Anima's River Trail Lighting, Skyline Trailhead Construction, Smart 160 Trail Construction, Fort Lewis College Softball Complex and Tennis Courts Development.
And then I also asked for the, I voted in 1999, and I also voted in 2015 for this half-cent sales tax. This is what you get when you vote for the 2015 sales tax, so I wanted to show you what you got for your money, you know? That's what we talk about. This is how your money's being spent. Would you read those, please?
Durango Community Recreation Center Construction, Anima's River Trail Construction of 9th Street Underpass, Anima's River Trail Construction of Albertson's Section, Anima's River Trail Construction of Main Avenue Underpass, Anima's River Trail Construction of the 15th Street Swinging Bridge Section, Anima's River Trail Construction of Escalante Crossing Section, Anima's River Trail Construction of River Gate Pedestrian Bridge, Anima's River Trail Construction of South Durango Pedestrian Bridge, I'm going to say ART instead of Anima's River Trail.
Sure.
ART Construction of Mall to High Bridge Section, ART Construction of High Bridge to Walmart Section, ART Construction of Walmart to Escalante School Section, ART Gardella 66-Acre Acquisition, ART Construction of Escalante School to Escalante Crossing Section, ART Construction of the Skate Park Trail Section, ART Dalaveta Park County Land Acquisition, ART Construction of the Library Trail Section, ART Design of 32nd Street to Iron Horse Section, ART Center Solar Thermal, Recreation Center Solar Thermal System, ART Camino del Rio Underpass Study, ART Ria 5-Acre Acquisition, ART Construction of Carvon Mall Corner Section, Recreation Center Pool Drains to Comply with VGB Act, Recreation Center Improvements, ART Durango Silverton Narrow Gauge Railroad Easement Acquisition, ART Cameron Stirk 44 Acre Acquisition, ART Construction Memorial Park Section, ART Construction of Nature's Oasis to Harley Davidson Section, ART Construction of Whitewater Park Section, ART Construction of Anima City Park Section. Now in 2005, when the money was reauthorized in 2015, since that point, the Durango Gymnastics Facility Construction, Recreation Center Ultraviolet System, Recreation Center HVAC Replacement, More Park Shop Design, Lake Nighthorse Overflow Parking Lot Breakwater and Courtesy Docks Construction, Needham Connect Phase 1 Safe Rocks to School Sidewalk Construction.
Thank you very much, Ms. Blake, for this preparation. This is a great example of money well spent, citizen input from these boards, and City Council, we love all the amenities that we have in Durango. Ms. Baxter would like us to do more, and I'm sure that in the future, the City Councils will do more, but I think it's really, really good just to reflect and look at, you voted, this is what happens, and it's a pretty good deal, actually. So we appreciate, I appreciate that, Ms. Blake. Any other comments from council? Okay, well, with that, we're going to close the 20 November, and we hope to see you all again on November the 19th. Thank you very much.